Is that the only one they have? So that'll, okay, at least we know when they hold something.
Good evening. I am Angie Burtsville, President of the PHM Forum. On behalf of PHM Forum and my fellow officers, Allison Leidig and Secretary Rayanne Hamilton, welcome to the Meet the Candidates night. The Forum is pleased to sponsor this event this evening for voters in our community and an opportunity for you to meet the candidates running for the PHM School Board of Trustees. PHM Forum is made up of PHM parent volunteers chosen as representatives by their PTOs or PTAs. We meet monthly during the school year with Superintendent Dr. Jerry Thacker to hear about various members of PHM administration on topics of interest, which we then share with our PTOs and PTAs. For information about the Forum, you can visit our website, which is linked within the PHM District website. Thank you to PHM for providing the resources for this evening to make it possible, the location, the setup, the audio, technical support, including the livestream for those of you that could not attend in person today. We are not providing visual participation either by the candidates or the board members of the public. A recorded version of tonight's event will be available on PHM's YouTube account. PHM Board of Trustees is a seven-member board. Penn Township has three seats, Harris Township has two seats, and Madison has one seat, and then there is one at-large seat. This year, three seats are up for election, seats two and three from Penn Township and seat four from Harris Township. While the candidates must reside of the township seat, they are running at least two years immediately preceding the date of election. Every registered voter residing within PHM boundaries can vote for all these seats on the ballot. PHM Board of Trustees is the policy and governing body of the school corporation. PHM provides public education for approximately 11,300 kindergarteners through 12th graders. There are 15 schools, 11 elementary schools, three middle schools, and one high school, Penn High School. PHM Forum invited all six running candidates to this year's, to this year's participation event, Meet the Candidates. Five of them will be joining us this evening. Members of the public could submit questions online prior, prior to tonight's event. Follow myself and my fellow Forum officers. We reviewed all of the questions. Priority was given to those questions focused on public education and issues that are in direct scope of the public school corporation. We combined questions of similar topics and reface them that were more neutral and respective in tone and allowed for a more open-ended response. This event is two hours long, concluding at 8:00 PM. The format is as follows. To start, we're going to give each candidate an opportunity to talk for five minutes, to introduce themselves, share qualifications, and their platforms. This will be done in alphabetical order by last name. Each candidate will then be asked the public's pre-submitted questions with 90 seconds to respond. In-person audience members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the candidates, and they will have 90 seconds to respond as well. You'll see that there's a podium in the center of the aisle, and that's where you will ask your questions. Lastly, each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement. It is neither our intent or desire to make this contentious in nature. We appreciate your professionalism, mutual respect for each other, as well as those who have graciously given their time to make this a accessible event for our community. Each candidate will now have five minutes to introduce themselves, share qualifications, and their platform. At this time, I would like to introduce each candidate by name. We will begin with candidate Katie Bell. Ms. Bell, your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Katie Namnitz Bell, and before I begin, I just want to thank the PHM Forum for hosting this tonight, and then also the four candidates up here for spending your time with me tonight so that we can share and address with the community why we're doing what we're doing and give them some insight into our policies. I think a school board election is difficult because you've got a yard sign and that's about it. So tonight, I hope all of you leave here with more clarity and see what each of us brings to the table. Throughout my life, I have been a passionate, hard worker who's been recognized for that on multiple occasions. I was a PHM student from kindergarten through my senior year, and actually, my senior year of high school, I won the Most School Spirit Award, and I was in the yearbook for that. After leaving PHM, I went to Ball State where I studied education. In my senior year, I was nominated for Outstanding Senior of the Year. That award is given to somebody who's made a lasting impact on Ball State University. My senior year, instead of doing just the 16-week student teaching, I did full-year student teaching. So for those of you, I see a couple teachers in here. You know, a lot of you did your student teaching. You start in January, and you walk into a classroom that's already, has rules and procedures in place, and you come in and you take over the content in the curriculum. But it's important for first-year teachers to learn how to get a classroom rolling and how to start the first six weeks of school because ultimately, the first six weeks of school will determine your success for the rest of the school year. So I, with a supervising professor, we studied the benefits of why student teachers will be better off after student teaching for the full year, and they're still using that curriculum at Ball State today. After that, well, right before graduation, PHM was down at a job fair in Muncie that I was at, and I went straight to the PHM booth because that is where I wanted to work. I left with an interview and graduated a few days later. That summer, I was assigned to teach kindergarten at Prairie Vista. After that, my husband and I moved to Chicago where I taught in the Chicago Public Schools for three years. My first year there, I had 39 students with no teacher's aide. To give you some background on that school, it was in the neighborhood called Anglewood. Anglewood is one of the most dangerous neighborhoods in the city in terms of gang violence and crime, violent crime per capita. So when you have 39 students who are coming to you every day to learn, and then you also see, you know, what they're dealing with at home, that was a very hard situation for me, and in December, I said that I am losing my mind and I'm the one that has to change. So I spent every day of my winter break that year working in my classroom and fixing things. And at the end of the school year in May, I was nominated for a staff, or I am sorry, I won a staff-nominated award, Most Improved Teacher, and the only thing that that shows you is that my unwavering work ethic has taken me very far in life. So now here I am before you. There's four years missing, and that is because I have twin daughters who are four, and my son will be two next month. I'm a stay-at-home mom full-time, and when we found out we were having twins, after we got over like the initial shock in the ultrasound room, I called my parents and I said, "We're moving home." My husband isn't from here. I'm from here, obviously, so I took the lead when it was time to come and look at a house, and I said, "We have to be in the PHM school system. My kids have to go to school where I went to school because of the educational opportunities it afforded me in my life." So we settled in Oceola where we live now. And the pillars and the reasons why I've decided to run for the school board, the first is safety, and I'm going to hit on that later. I know that that's going to be a topic that's brought up tonight. Everyone sitting up here, I think, would say, "Safety is paramount. Your children deserve to be safe from the minute they step on a school bus to the minute that they get home." The second thing is teacher retention, and this one is one I'm really passionate about because I worked at a school in, the one in Chicago. Every year, we had 10 to 12 new teachers, and the people that suffer from that are the students. Teaching is a craft. It is something that you get better at each year. You study, you read, you do it. A lot of it, you learn from doing. And so when you have new teachers coming in every year, the, the people who suffer are the students. And so we want to make sure that we are keeping PHM at, as the gold standard in education so that teachers get hired here and want to stay here. The last thing I'm going to talk about, and I'll bring this up more later, is that this should be a nonpartisan school board, and I want to make sure that it stays nonpartisan. I cannot reiterate enough how lucky I am to be standing in front of my community, the community that raised me, running for an election. I am disappointed that one of my opponents did not show up tonight, as I feel it's very brave to address your community because we owe transparency.
Thank you. We will now hear from candidate Gary Fox. Mr. Fox, your time starts now.
Thank you to the PHM Forum and especially Angela Burtsville for pulling this together tonight. It's a difficult and a nonpartisan election race for candidates to get information out. To you, the audience, thank you for taking the time from your busy, crazy schedule to come and learn about your candidates. come and learn about your candidates. You should be informed when you vote because there are distinct differences in tonight's candidates, and without this event, school board elections are purely popularity contests. Remember, PHM is a $150 million, 11,000-student, 1,500-employee district. PM is a large organization, and your board must be able to operate at that level. My 10-year-old granddaughter is my campaign manager, because as you all know, 10-year-olds know everything. So I gave her my prepared marks tonight, and I got a double eye roll. If eye rolls were an Olympic sport, 10-year-olds would be gold medalists. So I'm disregarding them, and let's get ready to ramble. Vince Lombardi, the greatest coach ever, said, "No one's perfect. However, the pursuit of perfection leads to excellence." That's PHM. Pursuit, perfection leads to excellence in education. When I was on the board, starting in the early years, we had three superintendents in six years, around a 70% graduation rate, reduction in forced claims every year, although the corporation was one of the best in our county, declining enrollment was projecting a proposed $3 million budget shortfall. The board in 2006 decided to take a different route and pursue excellence in everything. We hired Dr. Jerry Thacker, who understood the vision, strategy, and what success looked like to the board, and he executed on that strategy. The rest is history. A 98% graduation rate, strong budget, immaculate and safe facilities, some of the best IREDS scores in the state, and low tax rates. I could go on for my entire five minutes about all the excellence. If everything is so good, why am I running? Because everything is excellent, but it's not perfect. With my background in finance, I could give you several things that we need to be considering in the future that are financial rated. I could talk about a distracted board that concerns the teams and the community. But here is the one item that needs to be addressed now. Staffing shortages continue to be a struggle. There's a tight market for teachers, aides, and subs. If we're serious about continuous improvement, this must be addressed, or we will not improve. We have awesome teachers, aides, and subs. They love our students, may not always like them, but they just need more support and more of them. The first thing when elected, I will work with the team to address this issue and review budget priorities to see where we can find the dollars. I believe discipline issues, absenteeism, and the ability to make a positive impact on our lowest learners are hampered by these resource constraints. When we solve this, we will become the employer of choice in our community, and ultimately, that will make us a school of choice. Families follow great teachers. I know we can do this. So here are some things you consider that matter as you make your decision. Board talent mix. Of the six candidates for three board spots, four are former teachers at PHM, one in business sales, and one certified public accountant. In the Penn Township race, it's guaranteed that at least one and two could be former teachers, could be elected. I think it's awesome to have a former teacher on the board. That's a great thing. But I do believe board mix, board roles, broad experiences matter. Qualifications matter. I've been married to a teacher, Tammy, for 44 years. I have a daughter that's a teacher for over 15 years, and I currently have two grandchildren in PHM. I understand the joy and frustration that comes with being a teacher. I've been a certified public accountant with a top-10 firm, Crowe, for over 42 years. I previously served on the PHM board from 2000 to 2020 and chaired the board for several years. I serve on the IU South Bend Advisory Board and the Purdue University Mitch Daniel School of Business Board. In 1995, along with Mick Tuesley and others, we started the PHM Educational Foundation. It is amazing where that foundation is today under Jennifer's leadership. I'm proud of my commitment to education and to PHM. Board experience matters. You should ask, no, I think you should demand that a board have strategic pillars that filter every decision. Here are mine. Safety, top priority. Transparency, transparency. Our community and employee group should demand it. Accountability, every decision must have accountability assigned. And fiscal responsibility. We need to ensure that every dollar spent directly contributes to enhancing our students' educational experience. My views on these topics will be discussed later during the Q&amp;A session, or you can view them on my Facebook page or website. You should expect your board to be committed to a safe, transparent, accountable, and fiscally responsible school environment. Today, together, we can foster a community where students can learn, grow, and reach their potential. I want to earn your support. I want to help Penn team make magic. I promise you the best is yet to come.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. We will now hear from current board member and running candidate Jim Garrett. Mr. Garrett, your time starts now.
Thank you very much. Just on. I graduated from, this is an introduction of myself in case you don't know me. I graduated from New Market High School in 1967, Ball State University in 1971, and then I began teaching here in the PHM system at Schmucker Middle School after graduation. I taught personal business and typing, and just to make a notation here, personal business, PHM has been doing that since the early '70s, and finally, the state of Indiana has made it a required class. It just took them, you know, several years to catch up with us. But we've been doing that since 1971. I also volunteered as a football coach for 7th grade that first year that I taught, and then I continued football, basketball, track at Schmucker Middle School for like 25 years. I had a lot of interesting experiences in my first few years. I learned how to coach when I learned how to teach typing because I had a young girl in my class, about my second or third year of teaching, and this girl came in. And back in those days, we had the old hunt-and-peck, you know, royals and whatever those were. But this young girl did not have any hands. And back in those days, there were no prosthetics the way there are today, so she had like two metal appendages. So learning how to teach a girl with no hands how to type was an experience. But we worked through it. She did a great job. She did everything we asked, and she was able to, at the end of that class, type and do work that was very proficient. And also learned how to tell my students, back in those days, my kids would say, "Well, Coach, you can't type very fast." And I'd say, "Well, I may only be able to type 55 words a minute, but I can teach you how to teach 80 words a minute." So being in the classroom helped me become a better teacher and a better coach. I also found that I loved being a teacher. When I first graduated from college, you know, it was kind of an iffy thing for me about being a teacher. I didn't really know if that's what I wanted, but my first day in class at Schmucker Middle School, and I was hooked. And I can tell you that over the last 43 years that I taught at PHM, I never had a bad day in the classroom. And I can tell you this, I hope that all teachers, I mean, that would be my, if I could, if I could just do anything for all teachers, have as much fun, love teaching as much as I did. So I spent 19 years at Schmucker. Then I transferred to Penn High School when the freshmen moved over. When I first started teaching, I don't know if you remember, freshmen used to be in the middle school. But, and I wondered if the high school students would like my, I don't know, my shtick, I guess, as well as the middle school students did. And what I found out was that the high school kids loved it even more. So I continued at Penn High School, and I always tried to instill in my classes that, you know, discipline. You know, a lot of people think discipline is punishment. Really, it's not. If you have discipline, you don't need to punish anybody. If you have discipline, what you can do is you can have fun. If you work hard, you have fun. And if you have good discipline and you work hard, you're going to have what? Success. And success is fun as well. So during that period of time, all the years I taught at Penn High School, we had a lot of fun being disciplined. We had a lot of fun working hard, and we had a lot of fun being successful. In 1996, I'd been an assistant coach or a middle school coach for Penn Football, but I gave that up and took over the girls' golf team, and, well, I really don't have enough time to tell you about all the success we had there. So I'm going to move on. As far as my qualifications are concerned, I have spent eight years on the PHM School Board, and I have 43 years of teaching experience at Penn High School and Schmucker Middle School. I have dealt with the parents, I've dealt with teachers, administrators, and students. When we have issues concerning classroom, facilities, policy, et cetera, all things pertaining to public education, I know what those things are, and I believe that having my experience makes me uniquely qualified to give an opinion.
That's it.
Wow.
It goes fast.
It does. All right, so experience does count. I agree. But the right kind of experience counts even more. And so I can't imagine how an experienced teacher wouldn't be a perfect person to be on the school board. So my platform consists of supporting the PHM administration and continuing to upgrade, modernize, and add to our buildings and facilities. We are a 6A school. I believe we deserve 6A facilities. Dr. Thacker's done an unbelievable job with our improvements while maintaining the lowest tax rate in our area. This kind of success needs...
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Your time is up.
Sorry. Thank you.
Next, we would like to hear from candidate Art Klinger. We will let your start, time start now. Thank you.
My name is Art Klinger, and I'm here to interview for a seat on our school board. During my 45-year career here in PHM, from 1970 to 2015, I was administrator and director of the Planetarium, a teacher, and an assistant varsity football coach at Penn High School. Also, my wife Jenny and I and our two kids have lived in Harris Township since 1990. Our son and daughter attended both Element, or Horizon Elementary, Discovery Middle School, and graduating from Penn High School, and then, of course, on to their respective universities. The point is, I, or we, are deeply invested in everything that's PHM. Now, I graduated from Riley High School. Keep in mind, the landscape was a little different back then than it is today. I graduated from Riley High School in 1966. You remember when Lincoln was president, or some of my students think that anyway. I graduated from IU Bloomington in 1970 with a BS in Education, Bachelor of Science in Earth Sciences. And then I graduated from Western Michigan University in 1975 with a Master of Arts in General Science. Being the Administrator Director of the Planetarium during this time, the 45, or 35 years out of the 45 that I was the Administrator Director of the Planetarium, it allowed me to work with every student, every student, every teacher, every administrator from grades K through 12. In addition, I worked with every superintendent and school board, starting in 1978, with Dr. Spiker and that school board on the idea of a planetarium which would serve the entire district. This continued very successfully until 2011 because of the 850,000-plus people that had been through the Planetarium during that time. The equipment was wearing out. I went to Dr. Thacker, explained this to him, and he is a very far-thinking person, truly is. He said, "I'll tell you what. I think we should have a digital video theater called Planetarium and make things grow from there." And he was absolutely right. So he and that school board okayed a major renovation to the Planetarium, which benefits, continues to benefit everyone in PHM. My point is, I will be able to utilize all of this experience of actually working with every department in PHM, and I will be able to share all of this with you in taking our school community upward and onward. My platform, by the way, is very simple. I'm all for safety. I want that to be a priority. I like to see reading scores continue going up, which is very good. Also, I want to see math scores going up, and how about science? I'd like to see all those things moving up, and I'd like to be involved in seeing that happen. I'm also concerned about respect and discipline between administrators, teachers, and students. Seems we have a growing shortage of teachers nationwide and even locally. Well, I wonder why. Is it based on just salaries? I don't think so. I'd like to find out why that is. I'm sure there may be many reasons, but I'd like to find out. I'd like to see educational programs go and give you an example. I'd like to see aviation started up. I'm a private pilot. I'd like to see ground school taught at PHM, at Penn High School, and maybe even the middle schools. When you get your private license, you have to have ground school and flying. Well, I'm not saying we teach the flying part. Might be some liability there. But ground school could be done, and that would really help the student who is interested in pursuing that. I'd also like to see some educational facilities going in. I'd like to see partnerships with corporations. How about SpaceX as an example? SpaceX or Virgin Galactic? That's real stuff that we could get involved in. And believe it or not, we do have some connections with some people in those organizations. And finally, all I'm asking for is your support. I do not belong to any coalition, any PAC. There are some people on here who do belong to organizations that support them with funding. I don't have any of that. I'm doing it all on my own, but I need you. And if you're willing to go along with me, great. We can make great things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Lastly, we will hear from current board member, Vice President Ryan McCollum. Mr. McCollum, your time starts now.
Happy homecoming, everyone. What a way to start off the week. Beat the Lions. I think all of our high school sports will be playing the Elkhart Lions this week. So thanks, PHM Forum. Thank you all for attending and learning more about the candidates. I think this is an important night. Thank you, fellow board member and other candidates for attending as well. A little background on me, I went to Mary Frank Elementary, Schmucker Middle School, attended Penn High School, graduated in 1995 along with my wife Nicole. We have three children who have graduated Penn High School, went through the Penn system, one recently this fall, and a daughter, a sophomore who's currently at Penn. A mother-in-law, Kay Delio, many teachers know her. She taught in the Penn schools for 30-plus years, and my dad, who was fortunate enough to tend tonight, was also a school board member and current football coach. So all that being said, we bleed black and gold in the McCullough-Delio household. I, we're Kingsman through and through, and that's why I interviewed for this job on the school board three years ago. I am finishing up my third year and would love to continue, continue down that path of helping a school district that not only make my family excellent, but I think all my family, friends, and a lot of the colleagues, people I just know in the community would agree, it's one of the best high schools, and in my opinion, the best high school in the country. And I've lived and traveled, lived in many places and been to 49 states, and I can attest, we're one of the best in public high schools. My pillars are simple. You're going to hear a lot of repeat from me, but that's how important it is. Safety, number one. I work on safety every day. I'm so proud when I joined the board or right before I joined the board that we're announced as the sixth-safest school district in the country with the consistent battles of school violence, you know, funding and shortages for transportation, mental illness, on and on. Safety, you got to work on it every day, being involved in the school board. I felt that way since the day I was in Colorado when Columbine hit, and I've, when I was able to help make a difference on the school board, I made that my number-one priority and hope to continue that for more years. Resources. Resources for our students, more importantly, resources for our teachers, our staff, and our community. I think that's very important. We've got to, we've got to keep this momentum going. While I've been on the board, we've given two of the largest pay increases to our teachers and staff. There's a third one that kicked in this year, another 3%. Very proud of that, but we're not done. I think to retain the amazing teachers we have, I mean, I think the state just awarded us, we have 100% highly effective and effective teaching staff, 100%. That means not one teacher in our district is rated below the effective rate. I mean, that's an astonishing, a great accomplishment, and we've got to keep that going. So just doing those resources, and again, resources and technology, whether that's in the classroom, resources the kids can take home, Chromebooks, what's next in that realm? So I think resource is a very important aspect of this, of this role. And then facilities. In the last two years, we've, or last year and this, next year, we will spend almost $45 million in new facilities and facility renovations and upgrades. I think that's as important as the first two. I mean, to have great lighting, to have a boiler room that works when the climate is, you know, constantly up and down. The new fieldhouse across the street, so proud to be a part of that, that program. And again, that's another amazing facility that gives every student and child and parentless community an opportunity for another safe space after school, whether it's, you know, robotics can use it, or women's wrestling. It's just a great phenomenal facility. We need to keep investing in those facilities and giving those resources to make our schools so where a kid gets excited to come to school in the morning. He's on a new bus that has air conditioning or heat, and when he gets to school, he knows his classroom is well-lit, it's got all the cool technology, and the teacher, I think, would appreciate that as well, so continue to do with that. And... And lastly, I just want to take this opportunity. If this gets aired, I think there's a lot of high school kids that are going to watch this. Register to vote. Spread that word. Regardless, if you want to vote for me or not, I think this is going to be one of the most important elections, not only locally. And I'll get into some of the state things that we're going to battle here in the next couple, next couple of months. But register to vote, make it, help make a decision for this, for this community. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, we'll be moving on to the next section now. We provided a Google form for members of the public to submit questions. Myself and my fellow former officers sitting up here with me today reviewed the questions. As I stated in my opening remarks, priority was given to those questions that are focused on public education and those that are directly about public school corporations. Because this portion of the program is forty minutes, each candidate will be asked the same question with ninety seconds to respond, and this allows us to ask a total of five questions. The candidates will be responding in alphabetical order, such as they did for their introductions. We'll start with the first question now. What are some of the biggest challenges you think PHM faces and what do you see as possible solutions? Ms. Bell, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I think that the biggest challenge that PHM faces right now is support in our elementary school classrooms. I think nationally, home culture has changed, and it's changed here in our area as well. So right now, we have a lot of students coming from in-district and out-of-district where needs are not being met at home, and they are now coming to school for those needs to be met. The way that shows itself is through where you would see as like a discipline issue, as acting out. You know, when I taught fourth grade, I had three students that did not know how to read. And so the one thing they would do is try to get out of class and try to cause problems because they were so embarrassed and they weren't having that need being met. So I think the one thing we need to do is make sure our teachers, our EAs, our principals, our school nurses, the lunch chef, everybody in our elementary school needs to feel supported because as more needs are addressed, you will see discipline go down. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fox, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Sure. Yes, please.
What are some of the biggest challenges you think PHM faces and what do you see as possible solutions?
You know, I know we have some difficult fiscal issues coming up in the future, especially with what's happening with some state legislation out there. I believe the staff shortage is by far the biggest issue we have. We've got to get our arms around that because that impacts discipline. That impacts absenteeism. That impacts the impact on our lower quartile. I know we can get after that. We will get after it. But to me, we've got to solve that first, and then we go after some of the other things later.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, same question. What are some of the biggest challenges you think PHM faces and what do you see as possible solutions?
Well, I would believe that one of the big issues that we need to deal with is the, are the test scores for I-Learn. I know it's been a, I don't know, it's been a big pill to swallow, I guess, for us because we saw the I-Learn scores were a lot lower than the scores we had been used to getting. So doing all the things we can do to bring those scores up, I believe, is very important. And that would include, you know, teaching, our professional development for our teachers. We have teachers of reading and spelling, the LETRS program. We have new teacher professional development going on right now for classroom management and positive behavior initiatives, which I believe anytime you can do things like that, that's going to improve your classroom performance. Also, the science of reading training that we have been doing. All these things, you can contribute. And we want to thank Dr. Short for all those initiatives that she's been working on. Also, I believe that attendance, attendance, we have new state laws for attendance. And we need to make sure that we're working with our teachers and administrators to make sure that where we need to do to get students in the classroom, we're doing it. And then, of course, safety and security. We received a safety grant recently. I think it's around ninety thousand dollars. And I know that right now that money is earmarked for improvements in our cameras at Mary Frank and Metal's Edge. And then, of course, like everyone's saying, staff shortages. But if we do all the things-
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you.
Mr. Klinger, next, same question. What are some of the biggest challenges you think PHM faces and what do you see as possible solutions?
Oh, I agree with what I've been hearing. I mean, safety is a definite thing that needs to be addressed. Again, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Short for doing an outstanding job with e-learning and the scores and everything involved with that. I know she wants to get things up, and I think that would be a great thing to continue pushing that up. Again, I mentioned math scores. I'm big on having that go up as well. I suppose everybody's big on things going up, but definitely that. Discipline and respect. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about teacher shortages. Why? I mentioned that earlier. Working with private industry. I think there's openings there. I'd like to pursue that. I already mentioned those things earlier. And kudos to Dr. Thacker and the school board for keeping our tax rate low. I think it's been a terrific job when you see what we're moving forward on and, you know, doing that with state funding can be tricky. I think board and superintendents have been very good with that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McCollum?
Yeah, so great answers by these folks up here. Can't disagree with any of those. School, school safety is still my, again, an ever-evolving challenge, whether it's, like I said, school violence, making sure we've got the best and most safest buses that pick our young ones up every day and bring them home in one piece. Mental health, addressing that, and just anything within the violence or bullying or threats. We've got to continue to stay ahead of that because the bad people are always trying to do more harm than good and staying ahead of that. One thing that I've learned being on the board is getting connected with some of the state legislation. I'm the legal representative for the school board. And if you don't know, Senate Bill 255 is kind of a open-school-choice reform that's coming this winter. And what that means is kids, if this goes through, every Hoosier student will have the opportunity to choose any school they want within their area. And that, that money will follow them. So public schools, if this bill in Indiana, could lose a tremendous amount of funding, which, who's going to pick up that bill? The taxpayers and, and our school board going forward is going to have some very tough, difficult decisions because we're going to have to cut programs. So just getting involved with that and trying to stay ahead of that. Talk to as many legislator, decision-makers I can to kind of avoid going down that path. But that's a challenge coming up for sure.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second question now, and Ms. Bell, we'll start with you. What do you hope to accomplish in your four-year term of office?
So I've thought about this question a lot, and I can't sit up here and tell you, you know, what I'm going to do and what I'm not going to do because I'm not coming into this position with an agenda. What I'm coming here with is thoughtful decision-making. So when something comes on my desk, first I'm going to read it, and I'm going to read it again. I'm going to ask questions. I'm going to contact my mentors. My mentors at PHM and my mentors that I have other places. And I'm going to do everything I can to get as much information as I can on every single issue that I will be voting on. So I can't tell you, you know, I'm going to vote this way, and this is how I vote, and this is how it's going to be. I think in 2016, if you would have asked this question at a forum like this and said, you know, in four years, is the school, are all the schools going to be virtual? And it's very hard to predict that. And so I don't think I can predict the types of things that are going to happen and that I may be doing research and learning about. But I am dedicated to learning everything I can to make the best decision for the students, the teachers, and our community. In 2029, when I leave office, I want to leave knowing that students are succeeding in PHM and that we are still the gold standard of excellence in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Would you read it again, please?
Sure will. What do you hope to accomplish in your four-year term of office?
Thank you. No, for me, the first thing we have to accomplish is becoming an employer of choice. Retention of teachers, recruiting of teachers, of aides, of subs. We've got to become an employer of choice, and I really want to get after that in the first term. Second thing is, as Ryan pointed out, this legislation coming forward is a huge issue for Penn. I think we can win. I think we can be competitive and get more students because of that. We can make up for the potential decline enrollment we have. So I think this is a huge issue that we've got to get our arms around from a funding perspective. I think it's a big advantage for us, and I'd love to see us be the school of choice. We've become the employer of choice. We've become the school of choice because of what we do and we understand this funding as we go forward. I really think there's a huge opportunity for us from that perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, what do you hope to accomplish in your four-year term of office?
Well, I hope to accomplish a lot more of the same. I want to continue to support our facility improvement and expansion. I want to keep the tax base low. I want to provide whatever our teachers need to provide the best educational opportunities for our students. I want to support our teachers and administrators in their efforts to affect better and more efficient classroom discipline initiatives. I want our teachers, right now, our teachers are undergoing a lot of the professional development in this particular area. And I support this wholeheartedly because I believe, again, if you have good discipline in your classroom, you're going to have more students, learning more, and it's going to be making better for everybody. And also, that's going to help us to recruit students to come to Penn in the future. I mean, if parents know that they come to Penn, their kids come to Penn, they're going to be in a well-disciplined, motivational classroom where teachers care about you and things are getting done and you're not being harassed and kept from learning because of, you know, discipline issues. I think that's going to be a big plus for us. So I agree with Gary. I'm not afraid of school choice. People are going to choose to come to Penn, and I'll tell you why. Because we're Penn and they're not, baby, and that's the way it's been ever since I've been here.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Klinger, what do you hope to accomplish in your four-year term of office?
Well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, the platform I've been talking about is pretty much what I would do. For instance, raising scores, reading scores, I-Learn, the math scores I like to see go up. I'd like to make a good environment for teachers and, of course, students. But I'm going to tell you something. The respect and survey really bothers me. I mean, when a student, when you tell a student, "Please sit down," and that student says, "F you," I mean, what are you supposed to do? You send the student to the office, and then I hear sometimes they're set right back. Nothing's done. And pretty soon, it becomes meaningless. No turns into, "Yeah, it's okay." And then that spreads like cancer, and I, you can't stop all of it, but something needs to be done. I don't like the idea when an administrator says, "Well, why don't you make your lessons more exciting?" Or, "What did you do to provoke the kid?" Now, wait a minute. What about teachers' rights, too? So respect and discipline is a big thing with me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough, what do you hope to accomplish in your four-year term of office?
Agree with Coach Klinger that it's kind of a repetitiveness. My pillars of what I'm running on, I want to continue to strive. I think sometimes we get very pat on the back at PHM for winning state championships. I think it's time to take it to the next level and start winning some national championships. I know we won one this summer in debate, I believe. But I believe that's where we can take. Let's be number one in the country in safety. Let's be number one in teacher pay, teacher recruitment. Let's be number one in technology for our students, college readiness, career readiness. And let's be number one in facilities. State championships are, seem like we're announcing one every week, and that's fantastic. And that hard work is well-deserved. But I feel we're at the level, both financially, can be with community sport, to be at the national level, and I hope to get there. And then selfishly, one of the, if you don't know this already, one of the few perks of the job is we get to go to commencement. And my daughter will be graduating in three years, and I would love to hand her her diploma.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the third question. As a school board member, what key initiatives or strategies would you focus to enhance both student safety and academic achievement in PHM? Ms. Bell, we'll start with you.
So we need to continue to be the safest schools in the area. We've won awards for being the safest school district in Indiana, and we need to continue to do that. And that means as things change, we need to change, too. And then, in terms of the academic achievement, my background in curriculum and instruction, I'm an expert when it comes to this. So we need to be utilizing our response to intervention. And for those of you who aren't teachers, there's three tiers. So your tier one is your whole group instruction that everybody in general education gets. Your tier two would be kids in smaller groups, but that are either passed by maybe a little bit, they're right on the cusp, or they're close to passing. And then they're receiving services in their classroom from their teacher. The third tier would be intense intervention, intensive intervention, and that is how you get the kids that aren't passing I-Learn year in and year out. And that's with the tier-two support as well. That's how you keep those kids that, yeah, they passed a little bit, but we don't want to just put them in tier one and just let them go. We want to make sure that we're supporting them so that they keep growing and moving forward. So like I said, I'm an expert on curriculum. So when it comes to academic achievement, I will do everything I can to ensure PHM continues on that path. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, as a school board member, what key initiatives or strategies would you focus on to enhance both student safety and academic achievement in PHM?
You know, from a safety perspective, there's two pieces to it. External safety, which we do a fantastic job. We bring in outside contractors to be able to help us with that. Internal safety, I think we have some opportunities for improvement. I really look at what we can do for the bus drivers, for the teachers. There's just things that's going on that I believe if we find a way to fund, and by the way, it's a zero budget, so if you fund something, you got to not fund something else. We've got to figure out how to fund these additional resources to be able to make that happen. On the other side of it, though, I would, I would love for us to continue to move forward in some areas and make, you know, make some things happen from that perspective as we look at academic achievement. We have to continue to support, you know, Mrs. Short, Mr. Linsky, they're some of the greatest people in the world. We're not going to improve academics. They are. We've got to support them. We've got to get rid of them having all these distractions that's keeping them away from doing what they can do really well as a board. We've got to support them, push them, eliminate their distractors, and let them move forward with the fantastic job that they can do.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, as a school board member or continuing school board member, what key initiatives or strategies would you focus on to enhance both student safety and academic achievement in PHM?
Well, first of all, I want you to know that student safety comes in many different forms. Student discipline efforts that stop bullying in all forms. That's what we need. We need to stop bullying one hundred percent. We need to provide our students or make them feel safe. Some students, when they come to Penn, you know, they need food, so we feed them. Some students need nurturing, so we nurture them. So whatever our students need when they come to Penn High School or any of our other schools, they get what they need. We provide that for them. So there's no, you know, trying to make sure that every student feels safe in our buildings. We make sure that the buildings are safe. We're on top of this, we're one of the top schools in the United States for safety. As we said before, I think we're ranked number six. But we need to continue to improve. We need to keep all of our options on the table. And this is one thing that only teachers can relate to. We do a lot of shelter-in-place drills where we have a situation where there's an active shooter out there. Well, I tell you, I've stood in a classroom, and I've had my thirty students in the corner back there. And I'm standing there with my two iron, and I know that when a guy comes through, if he comes through, you know, we have no protection. So we need to figure out ways to do better because no matter what we talk about, even though we have a great system, we have the three-tiered system of security right now, if and when something terrible like that happens, I don't want any teacher to have to stand there like that and have to determine, "Am I going to give my life up? Am I going to protect my students?" because you know we all will.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you.
Mr. Klinger, as a school board member, what key initiatives or strategies would you focus on to enhance both student safety and academic achievement in PHM?
Well, first of all, student safety and teacher safety is paramount. And that has to be taken care of right away or continued to be taken care of and improved. That's important. Something else I'm interested in, though, regarding achievement and the help of achieving things, and that's the STEM program. I'm sure some of you, maybe all of you, have heard of it. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And I think it's been changing now to STEAM, S-T-E-A-M, the A being art, not me. But, you know, art like in music and the fine arts, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And I think that is a critical thing that we need to push and move forward on. How do we do that? Well, how about learning labs, virtual learning labs? Or things can be created in a classroom, like in robotics as an example, and taken forward immediately. Not later on down the road, not some distant future, but like right now. And doing that along with current industry, again, like space- And doing that along with current industry, again, like SpaceX, getting involved with the space program and the technology with that. I think those things are something we should look into. And I'm all for that.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McCullough, as a continuing school board member, what key initiatives or strategies would you focus on to enhance both student safety and academic achievement in PHM?
One of my easiest questions, one of my favorite questions to answer. My three years, there's been very, there's been a lot of surprises. But one person I really have gotten to know and trust is Dr. Short and just her, her group, her passion for academic achievement and building the programs and providing the resources and attacking problems head-on. Grissom, for example, I mean, the improvements they made in the presentation, I believe it was last board meeting. I mean, that, that was a challenge she saw two years ago and fixes it. And so, on the academic side, it's trusting our administration and their leadership. Because I know firsthand, I've been to all the schools with, with our administration. They've got a wonderful relationship with our teachers and they know how to attack the problems and just supporting them. On the safety side, falls in the same building. Fortunate to know Dr. Linsky since we were gridiron buddies at Penn. And I know Dr. Linsky, Aaron, very well. And I know he has the same priorities as I do as far as safety. And I trust his leadership when he comes and presents us programs or once had a discussion on safety issues of hiring more SRO officers or traffic issues and student traffic issues we're about to have with Culvers and the, and the Fieldhouse. I trust his leadership in that. And it's just nice to ask questions and get involved with it. And until they, until they fail us, we've got wonderful leadership and just leaning on them.
Thank you. Fourth question, if you were talking to an in-district family considering moving their student to another district private school online or homeschool, what would you say to get them to reconsider staying within PHM? Ms. Bell?
So, the best thing I can look to for this answer is my personal experience as a PHM student. I only graduated 12 years ago. I was a senior in high school. And, you know, we have hundreds of clubs. I worked the freshman walk-around about a month and a half ago. And there were just tables lining every single hallway for kids to get involved and find where they fit. You know, we have over 40 AP classes right now. I think Ryan was the one that said it earlier. We have 100% high-quality teachers, so they're either highly effective or effective. And then every year, Penn wins numerous awards, whether it's state championships in sports, debate, Spell Bowl. You know, Penn is constantly winning. And then they're winning things like, you know, top in safety. PHM is the best, was the best, and should continue to be the best. So, again, I went down to Ball State and I felt very prepared to go to a state college because when I walked around that campus, I knew, hey, I've been at Penn High School before. I had to figure out where I fit in and find my place. And I was able to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, if you were talking to an in-district family considering moving their student to either another district private school online or homeschooling, what would you say to get them to reconsider and stay with PHM?
Well, I think the first thing I would do is ask them, "Why are they leaving?" I mean, there are some times where it's religious or other reasons that it's just not a fit in Penn. And so, I'd want to sit down and understand with them what their pain points are, why they're leaving, who I could connect them to to understand their pain points as they go forward. I mean, I think that, that would be the question that you'd want to know the answer to if you're trying to go forward. I mean, we have, I believe, Penn, Dr. Thacker, Dr. Short, Mr. Linsky have done a fantastic job of taking a large organization and turning it into smaller learning communities that gives everybody a place that they can feel at home. I'd want to understand, why do you not feel at home? What's the reason that you don't feel like this is the place for you to be and why you don't fit into one of the smaller learning communities?
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, if you were talking to an in-district family considering moving their student to either another district private school online or homeschooling, what would you say to get them to reconsider staying within PHM School Corporation?
Well, I would remind them of all the different opportunities that we have here at Penn. We are a big school, but let's face it, in reality, I don't care how big the school is, you're going to have four or five friends that you hang with. And when you do that, you know, it makes things seem a little bit smaller. And if you have a small group like that, the opportunities here are so many and varied that surely your child would be able to find something they can find success in. We have the best academics in the state. We have a large and varied extracurricular program here. Our students thrive in high school and are well-prepared for college life, just as Katie told you about. Our staff of teachers and counselors care and will provide your child with support and motivation that they may need. At Penn, we set the standard of success that all others strive to achieve. We're big, we're dynamic, yet we care about each other and every student. And we do everything we can to help them achieve their goals. And one thing about Penn, even when we're bad, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Klinger, if you were talking to an in-district family considering moving their student to another district private school online or homeschooling, what would you say to get them to reconsider staying within PHM School Corporation?
First of all, I'd want to know why they're leaving. And if they're debating, if they're just moved in and they're trying to decide where to go, I would say the same thing that Mr. Garrett was talking about. Hey, we've got great academics. We have very hard-working staff. We have great central office administrators, school board, and superintendent. We have good things going and we're here to help your son or daughter advance. Tell me another school district in our area that can offer all the things that we offer. Nobody, I'm aware of. Okay, there are other schools might be a little bit smaller. Yeah, well, they have less equipment and less things to work with. Our size isn't that big of a deal because we have a way of breaking things down into smaller groups. Great academics, great athletics. We're on a, we're on a rise. This corporation's been getting big since, since 1970, when I first started. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum, if you were talking to an in-district family considering moving their student to another district private school online or homeschooling, what would you say to get them to reconsider staying with Penn Harris Madison School Corporation?
I agree with the folks up here is I'd want to know why to drill down. But I'm going to give you the example of a conversation I had this summer with a family deciding whether they wanted to send their freshman daughter to Penn. And their concern was just the massive amount of enrollment and the large student population. And that's when I just sat down with them and said, you know, you realize Penn has over 100 extracurricular clubs and activities that range in dozens, literally dozens, of specialized activities or likes or, or, you know, religion. I mean, there's sports, there's all kinds of opportunities. And they range from four students to, I think FCA is over 200 students now. And so, there's just some amazing opportunities for any student coming as a freshman or moving into the district at these, at our schools to, to find a small group that, you know, they have the same alignment and likes and beliefs and family values. So, but if there's no, no general reason, I love to brag, bleeding black and gold. I start with, you know, the 80 or 98% graduation rate. My son's senior class last year left with $16 million in academic scholarships onto the next level. Our career readiness and college readiness programs are top in state. We're ranked in the top 4% as a school district in the state. 100%, I mentioned earlier, highly effective or effective teachers. And we're just getting started. So, please give us, give us a chance for a semester or two and we'll prove you right.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Bell, final question for the pre-submitted ones. As a school board member, what would you do so that families with diverse and sometimes conflicting viewpoints feel heard and feel fairly represented in the school board decision-making processes?
Thank you. I would do what I've been doing throughout this entire campaign. Anytime somebody poses a question to me on Facebook, I reply, "Please message me. I would love to speak with you." And then you don't just speak with somebody, but you make sure you're listening and you hear them. And you, you may not agree with their complaint, but everybody deserves to be, to be seen and feel heard. So, that's what you do. And then I can't promise that I will have an answer for them right away. I'm not ashamed to say that I would have to go and do my research and hear what they're saying and ask a lot of questions and then ask more questions and lean on my mentors and research what are studies saying. And then I would go back and it may not be the solution, you know, they wanted or that I wanted. And it may be a compromise, but I think we need to make sure that all parents are heard. And that means being transparent. It means taking phone calls from people that you know are disagreeing with you. I think healthy disagreement is great. And so, that is what my plan would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fox, as a school board member, what would you do so that families with diverse and sometimes conflicting viewpoints feel heard and fairly represented in the school board decision-making processes?
You know, transparency is one of my strategic pillars that I, that's part of my platform. I think we have to, I think we don't do a very good job of that sometimes. And we've got to be able to do a better job of communicating and make people feel like they're involved. I mean, I think our community, I think our people, our employees should demand that we do a better job in a transparency perspective. You know, there's someone sitting in the audience right now, and I was on the board a while back on an issue that we absolutely didn't agree on. And she came to several board meetings to discuss it. And, you know, I called her up and her husband and we went to lunch. And, you know, we still didn't agree when the, when the issue was over. But, but we were able to find common ground and we were able to find a place where, where we could agree to disagree. And then we put a strategy as to how we're going to move forward. You know, I bought a lot of lunches when I was on the board to do things like that. And I, I think, I think our community should expect us to be able to say, hey, we may not always agree, but we got to find that common ground. It's, this is all about the kids. And we got to make certain we're doing the right thing for our Penn students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, as a school board member or continuing school board member, what would you do so that families with diverse and sometimes conflicting viewpoints feel heard and fairly represented in the school board's decision-making processes?
Well, first of all, I would think we need to make sure that all the parents or patrons who have these questions know the, what the proper chain of communication should be, who they should look to to get the answers that they're looking for. Because I know many times if something goes wrong in the classroom, the parent calls the superintendent. You know, when actually they should call the teacher first and then the principal and then the superintendent. At least give everybody a chance to, you know, solve the problem. Many parents have expressed their concerns because they have followed these procedures and are still not getting the answers to their questions. I think these people feel like they're not being heard. So, I agree with Gary that that is probably something that should be looked into going forward. Because, you know, no one wants to feel like they're not being heard or not being listened to, whether you're just a parent or whether you're a member of the board. You know, you want to make, you want to feel like you're being listened to. And it makes everything better when everybody gets that feeling. Parents and patrons need to be heard and valued. And I believe this with all sincerity, no matter what side you're on, you know, you should be heard and listened to and your views should be taken into consideration. So, thank you. I made it.
All right, Mr. Klinger, as a school board member, what would you do so that families with diverse and sometimes conflicting viewpoints feel heard and fairly represented in the school board decision-making processes?
Well, first of all, I want to make it clear that I don't have all the answers. In fact, I don't even know if I know all the questions. That's where you folks come in. It's called communication. And anyone that has a problem or a concern, whether it's anyone out here in the audience or anyone coming into the school district, call me or email me. Talk to me and I'll try to find the answer. Because I don't know all the answers. I need to talk to people. I'm not the smartest guy in the room, sorry. I need to talk to people and get answers and communicate what I hear. And then they can make a decision on what they want to do. That's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. McCollum, as a continued school board member, what would you do so that families with diverse, diverse and sometimes conflicting viewpoints feel heard and fairly represented in the school board's decision-making processes?
Well, Coach Garrett and I have had plenty of this experience the last three years. And I always prefer a one-on-one basis. I think the school board meetings are business-style meeting and updates. And I think you can get more information when they, when they approach it at a one-on-one basis, whether it's an email or phone call. We're always accessible. And then I use the resources that I've learned to connect with the last three years, whether it's the Indiana School Board Association, which is a network of people on the school boards for various school districts, our wonderful administration, other school districts administration. Because more often than not, these, they're not the first person with a conflicting concern or of conflicting interest. So, sometimes the problem's been solved and we just don't know it. And, and like Gary had mentioned or someone else had mentioned, I always communicate back to them. I try to get it done in a few days. And a lot of times we don't agree on it, but I tell them, hey, here's the background on this. This might be a state legislation issue. It might be a local legislation issue. It might be a school board policy that we need to look into next time that's up for, for, for vote. So, I don't pretend to know any of the answers. I love doing the research. I love communicating. I hate bothering teachers. I think they have enough on their plate. So, I usually focus with the administration level and other people in the community. And like I said, I've got a very good network over the last three years that I've relied heavily on and worked through a lot of problems.
Thank you. At this time, members of the live audience will now have an opportunity to ask questions. You may form a line at the mic. Please be respectful and remain from making personal attacks. And appropriate comments or questions will not be answered and you will be asked to sit down. Please be as brief and concise as possible when you're asking your question. We want to give as many people as possible a chance to ask their question if they're here this evening. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer and respond and we will give them the 30-second warning. We've allotted 20 minutes for this portion of the program and need to conclude by 7:35 in order to give candidates an opportunity to give closing statements.
Hello. I was wondering what your plans are for improving dual credit enrollment, CTE programming, and building business partner relationships?
Do you want me to go first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll start, we'll just continue.
I'm sorry, I want to write those down. What did you say that they were? Dual?
Dual credit enrollment.
Okay.
CTE programming.
Okay. Yep.
And business partner relationships with the community. I know Mr. Klinger talked about SpaceX and a couple of other.
Yeah. That's something that I would have to look into and see where we are and where we can go forward. I can't tell you, you know, what I would do right now because I just need to do more research into it.
Mr. Fox, you go ahead. We'll just key state in alphabetical order. If you have a comment.
Sure. So, I think that's a great question and it comes in line with the new graduation certificates that are out there. You know, this is something, and you've seen, I think Purdue and IU both have said that the, it's, the graduation requirements don't qualify you to go to this, go to the universities. You know, I, I think that's something that we really have to do a great job working with our parents and helping them understand, okay, your students coming in as a freshman, this is what they want to do. Here's a path that you've got to, you'd like to take. And you may get the diploma, you may get the honors diploma, you may get the honors plus diploma, but you've got to understand what that path is. I think the, I think the partnerships, like Penn's done a good job with developing partnerships with business. I know Crowe has worked with, with some in the DAC program. I think we have real more opportunities. You know, I think Penn's had a little bit of a shift, maybe a lot of a shift. It used to be, we were 100%, 98% focused on college. And now he's kind of looking at what's happening in the world. We've kind of shifted that and we're starting to look at more of the other things. The manufacturing trade, I love the building program. It's one of the fantastic programs we have. I think we've got to look at that, too, as to, as to how we, you know, we've been so focused here. Let's focus on some of this other stuff as well.
Mr. Garrett, would you like to respond to the question?
Absolutely. All right. We have one of the best dual-credit programs probably in the state of Indiana, maybe the Midwest. Our students, I mean, I can't remember the exact numbers, but I know that a lot of those students graduate from high school with an associate's degree. You know, one or two years of college already paid for. When I taught at Penn, I was the COE coordinator, which is Cooperative Office Education. And back in those days, we were already big into having our students, you know, work in the community. So, our students would go to school half-day and then they would work half-day and get credit for their work. So, Penn has been into that, I mean, since, you know, I've been here. And that was 50 years ago. So, we are, we are always, if you want to look at, you know, the leaders of the pack, that's Penn. You know, when it comes to things that, you know, maybe other schools or the state of Indiana is coming around to finally, we've been doing that for years. So, and I think we want to continue to do that. So, and I think we want to continue to do that, but our association with businesses, our dual credit, our internship programs that we've had in the past, and our building trades where we build houses and sell them. I mean, look at the experience our kids are getting, you know, and again, it's not just college anymore, you know, it's the real world now. Everybody doesn't need to go to, to a four-year college. I mean, if they want to, that's great, we'll do everything we can to help you. But there are other things to do and, and these are the things we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger.
You said something about, about the dual credits. I can't speak to that. And this is a classic example, I don't have an answer. I'd have to talk, seek counsel, find information. What was the other part of your question?
CTE programming. So I work at the Career Center in Elkhart and didn't know if you, if the school board was planning to develop their own CTE programming, continue the partnership with the Elkhart Area Career Center. Just curious what that looked like.
I thought you were talking, hello? Is there a hum coming through here?
It's better now.
Too close to the mic. I thought you were talking about involving outside businesses too. Oh, let me give you a real quick example. I had a student by the name of John Edwards. This is about 30 years ago, astronomy student, was my planetarium assistant for two years. I didn't realize it or know about it, but he went on to Purdue and went into engineering. Elon Musk called for candidates to join this new program called SpaceX. He signed up, and this is no exaggeration, today, he's in charge of, I think, 30 or 35 rocket engineers. And he's been talking to me about, let's get something going here. And so we've been in touch, working with their developmental apartment, compartment. And we're trying to work the program out, but that's an idea, that's a way of, and then with that, we would try to have some virtual learning to take place and tie that in with students getting involved with the educational programs that they offer from their technology and going to the moon and all those kinds of things. So it sounds kind of.
All right, thank you.
Kind of far-fetched, but it is a reality and it will happen, I think.
Mr. McCollum?
Yeah. The dual credit, I think really our only weakness there is maybe starting at an earlier age explaining to families the opportunities that provides. I mean, financially alone, I've met some students in the class last year that were walking out of Penn as a junior in college and just, you know, everyone, if you don't know, look at the cost of state colleges anymore and private colleges, it's, it's an arm and a leg. And I think we need to continue on that path, just maybe bragging it about a little bit more, giving parents earlier information so they realize some of the deployment, diplomacy requirements that are coming down the road and changes they're making could make it a little bit more difficult. But again, relying on Dr. Short, Dr. Thacker, that team there, we're going to be a step ahead of that. So the CTE program, to my knowledge, we're not looking to get away from any of that. I think, I know we've had some discussions even partnering with the newer, the one coming onboard in South Bend and just offering more opportunities in CTE outside of our building. And lastly, business partners, that's a great point as far as getting involved. I think we've got some phenomenal business partners as far as sponsorship and funding a lot of our programs. Gary's one of them for, for, I believe it's the robotics team, right? So Culvers has been an amazing sponsor of a lot of things, but I, I know we, we, they attract a lot of students for, for work and getting some job, I guess, environmental learning in it, but we can always improve in that. But I'd ask the community, if you're watching this video and you own a company, reach out to us. We would love to partner with more and give kids more opportunity to learn hands-on from some of our wonderful local business partners. But excellent question. I feel we're best in class, but we got to keep improving.
Thank you. Thank you for your question.
Well, first of all, thank you for all the candidates who showed up to answer questions. This is exactly what the community needs, I think, to get all your thoughts on all the different issues. One of my biggest questions, okay, and I don't have many, I have two. So one of my biggest questions is professional development for teachers, okay? As I've been, I've been talking to a lot of different teachers and the ones that I spoke with had a common theme, they wanted to be more in control of their professional development. They wanted to pick their topics and instead of paying them out, we pay like $30,000, $40,000 sometimes to send our teachers to a third party to teach at professional development. Instead, why not use our own teachers? Let's get involved, find out where our teachers' strengths and weaknesses are and use our own teachers and maybe give them a bonus incentive. Let's keep it in-house. Because our, nobody knows the challenges of PHM better than our teachers. So instead of a third party doing professional development, let's have our teachers do it. My second question is, would the candidates consider maybe doing a town hall, kind of like this format? People get to ask questions, it keeps the communication going between the school board of the community and that builds trust. So is that something you would consider in the future, is having, you know, a town hall format, kind of like this, to hear from different members of the community? That's all I got. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Okay, do you want me to answer both of them at the same time?
I think that would be fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Still 90 seconds for both? Okay, sorry, I just don't want to mess up. Um, okay, so first of all, professional development, I actually had that written down as something I thought would get brought up tonight. And I think it, it's important that professional development looks different for different teachers. It's, it needs to be tailored, just like teachers differentiate their instruction, professional development has to be differentiated. When I taught kindergarten, my PD looked a lot different than when I taught fourth grade departmentalized reading. And so we need to make sure we are getting teacher input and asking them, you know, hey, what do you need? And then as an adminis, trusting our administrators who are evaluating them and watching in their rooms every day, okay, this is where I think they might need some support. What do you think? Do you feel like this would be beneficial to you? I think the best thing you can do is involve your teachers in their decision-making for their professional development. And then the second part was about the, oh, the town halls. I would have to look more into that. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just know that there's an open section at the end of all school board meetings for visitors to speak. So I would have to talk to the board and see the legalities of, would that be considered a board meeting or, I would just need more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
So, you know, the professional development is a great issue from a person, there's like five pieces to that. Number one, if we're really going to be teaching our students, I mean, our students are going to graduate and take jobs that don't even exist today with technologies that don't even exist today. You know, that, that would be a reach, I think, for some of our current teachers to be able to do this. So I think there has to be this mix between current teachers and experts that understand where the world is going, where teachers are going, things like that perspective, because we don't even know what their jobs are going to be. I think the second piece to the professional development side is when, you know, when we have professional development, our teachers aren't in the classroom and then you have subs. And if we're still wanting to strive to be great from an academic perspective, then, then, you know, that's kind of a, you know, there's some pros and cons to that as well. So I really, you know, I, I know Mrs. Short is probably the biggest expert in this in America, love to continue to hear her views and follow what she thinks. But, but I think there's a lot to that and I think a mix and understanding how we can maybe work around the other issue is something as well. You know, when I first got elected back in 2000, I had this great idea about the town hall and, and we actually had one and nobody showed. It is a wonderful idea, I would love to be able to do it, but, but you know, people are busy, really busy and, and thank God we have something like this tonight where so many people showed up. So thank you all for doing that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, I, I have advocated for a long time about using our teachers at Penn and throughout the school corporation as our people to use for our professional development. I know you can't do it all the time, but as a teacher of 43 years, who saw a lot of professional development in my experience, I believe that the best way to do for a teacher to be, you know, really impacted is to have another teacher work with you. Because I mean, we work great together as teams, when we work on teams, we seem to excel when we do that. And, and I know we're doing some professional development now with a classroom environment work and I know that that's from an outside agency and I support that 100%. But I also know that going forward, hopefully then maybe our teachers can learn from that and we can, or maybe one or two can learn from it and they can share that with the rest of us. But classroom management and motivation, that sort of thing, that's very important. And, you know, I like to think I was a pretty good motivator, so I'd be glad to come back and, and do that if you want to. Well, maybe not, but yeah. Yeah. Let's, let's get the teachers involved. I mean, if we're going to pay $35,000, let's pay some of it to our teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Klinger?
I really like Ben Dallas's question, that was awesome. Because 10 years I taught at Schmucker and every, it seemed like every year we'd have some national speaker come in from California or Arizona or wherever. And they'd come in and they would give us all these buzzwords, all these acronyms and all this special education stuff that we should be doing in the classroom. And it was a joke, to be honest with you, because it all boiled down to two words, common sense. Use common sense and you can do a lot of things with that and you can get a lot of that from your teachers. And I've known some great teachers that I'd like to sit down and listen to them talk, but we're so busy in our own classrooms, we don't have time to do that. So I think it'd be a great idea to use some teachers. And also we do need to involve, you know, people out in the industry that have new ideas. Again, I keep relating SpaceX, but that's my frame of reference right now. Bring in somebody like that that's in the field that knows it. But as far as teaching goes, come on, I mean, do we have to go outside and get all these other people? I think we have enough talent and we always talk about how great teachers are in PHM. By God, they are great, let's use, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
I'm a big fan of professional development. I think under Dr. Short's leadership of picking the right ones, the right subjects. And to my knowledge, most of the professional development we do at that level, we send academy leaders or, you know, certain departmental leaders. And then they come back and bring their team up to speed on some of the new technology in the classroom or, you know, ways to teach a certain new subject. And I'm, I'm a big fan of that. Again, we've got a teacher shortage now, it's hard to pull them out of the classroom. I know the teachers I talk to, for the most part, love, love professional development. I think it's an attractive benefit to PHM when we're trying to find new teachers. Get Your Teach On, if you guys haven't seen what that's brought to, to the Disney School, I mean, you talk about first in class and that, you know, they provide development as well and I think there's some great results. I'm a big sports fan. I, I read last week that Nick Saban still goes to coaching clinics. So I'm always learning more. Sometimes it's just, yeah, whatever, close your eyes for a little bit, you already know all about this, but big fan of professional development. I think with the right subjects, with the right energy, with the right group, I think it's very important. And, and having those people attend, you know, spread the word within their group. Town Hall, Ben, you put one together, I'll be there. Other than that, I can't speak for the other board members. I've had lunch with you before and you put one together, get a group, I'll be there.
Thank you for your question.
Me three. This is a hard and I have to imagine at times thankless job and I'm just curious, why are you running?
Go ahead, Ms. Bell. Okay. So I will go first. I am running because I have kids that are four and two. My son Theo will not graduate until 2041 and I moved back to this area specifically for this school district. So as I've seen things happening, I want to make sure PHM continues moving forward, that we continue empowering our teachers, that we keep, keep keeping students, you know, that we are still keeping students safe. I want to make sure that, I've said it before, the gold standard of education. And so I feel that I'm qualified to do this and I wanted to do this because I grew up in the district, I was a teacher, my kids are going to go here. I mean, 2041 is like 17 years away, so I'm going to be here for a very, very long time. And then I'm also going to have twins that are in kindergarten in two years and I'm planning on joining the PTO there and just getting as involved as, in our schools as possible. So, thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Sure. I think my wife asks me that every day. She said, you did this for 20 years, why are you running? And so I've done some practice answering that question. You know, when I left in 2020, I, I felt really good, Dr. Thacker and his team, he had a great leadership team. I felt really good about where we were, where the, you know, it was, it was a great time for me to, to retire from the school board. You know, I've watched the last four years and I just think there's this opportunity to really come back and add value. Take my experience that, that I've been able to do, you know, I've got 20 years of experience and, and I absolutely believe I can add value to the school system. I think I've got some great things on how to fund, you know, I love Mr. Klinger, you know, one of the things we did was figuring out how to fund the planetarium back in 2011. You know, things like that that are awesome to be able to look at, to, to add value to what's going on. I, I just think I have some experiences to be able to do that and I really see this, I want Penn to be the employer of choice, I want Penn to be the school of choice and I felt like I could add to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Well, the reason I'm running is to continue my tenure here. I've been school board for two terms, eight years. I started running, I ran for the school board originally back in 2016 because I was asked to. I really wasn't planning on running, but someone came to me and asked me if I would run and I did and I really enjoyed it. I feel like I have something to add with my experience and my love for the school, love for the school corporation. You know, I want to give back, I mean, Penn gave me so many things, so many awards, so many championships, many accolades, many, you know, this and that, whatever. I feel like I need to give back to the school corporation. And I believe that I have, you know, that I have the talent and I have things that I can add to this school corporation and I can help us weather the storm that's coming and continue to improve on the things we've been doing. And again, you know, I thought after eight years, I thought, well, you know, maybe I'll step down and let someone else run. But again, when I started talking about not running, I had a lot of people came to me and asked me to continue to run. And because of those people, because of their faith in me, because it was people who were close to me, a family, friends, people, administrators.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you.
Mr. Klinger?
When I started in 1970, PHM gave me the tools and the encouragement to take my students on a journey, the likes of which they'd probably never been on before. And I'd like to think that, I think I succeeded in doing most of that. At least that was my goal. My goal right now is to continue taking PHM onward and upward. And I believe we have the administration and the teachers to do that and I'd like to help that situation along. Give them the tools to go higher and farther with their kids.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
Penn's just a deep, has a deep root in our, in my heart. I mean, I met my wife at Penn, married for 24, I better get that right, 24 years. Three kids have come through Penn with some amazing influences. There's two people on this, at this table now that were amazing influences on me at Penn and Schmucker. And that experience with what I had from Penn, what I've seen through my kids, my, all my, majority of my best friends are still from my time at Penn and Schmucker, the same cafeteria here. And when I moved back from Denver 12 years ago or so, I wanted to get involved. I love being involved with kids and students and teachers. I love teachers. I have utmost respect for teachers and so I got involved in coaching and Five Star and some different programs and it just didn't feel like I was making a, a big enough impact as, as I wanted to. So when the opportunity came, coming out of COVID with an open seat, I applied, I received it and now I'm hooked, so to speak, because I can feel like I'm making a difference and I want to continue making a difference for our teachers and our students and our community. Don't ask my wife why I run, but that, those are my reasons.
Thank you. All right, we are going to go to 60 seconds just because we have three people standing and we'd like to have, give them all an opportunity to, to ask their question. Go ahead.
Thank you, candidates, for answering all these very serious questions. I have a lighter and hopefully shorter one. What is your favorite PHM event or type of event and why?
Ms. Bell, go ahead.
Okay, as a student, it was prom, obviously. Okay, as a student, it was prom, obviously. That was like the most fun thing to go to. But I think right now, and actually I've taken my kids every year to the homecoming parade, and that's new. That wasn't here when I was a student. I think that's awesome that the PHM Educational Foundation puts that on every year. I think not only do they include elementary, middle, and high school students, but I know, like my friends and I that have kids that are four and two as well, that's something we go to. And I think that's what's so unique about our PHM community is that you don't have to have kids in the elementary schools to still feel like you belong and feel like you're a part of the stuff that's going on here. So you will see me and my three kids, my husband, on Friday at the parade. Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
The board meetings, obviously, right? No, I'm really looking forward to the, I'm really looking forward to the homecoming coming up this weekend. Tammy and I, we decided to sponsor the Bounce House Kids Area. And so we're, you know, so kids can go for free and don't have to pay. And so we're looking forward to see people enjoying that and just the homecoming game and the atmosphere. Watching Mrs. Bell ride in a convertible Corvette, that's going to be fun to do as well. You know what, though? I still love, I love girls volleyball. I love girls basketball. I love boys basketball. You know, going to those things is so much cool. And then, and I am so excited when my grandkids are third and fifth grade, become seventh and eighth. So we can, we can kind of redo it because I got to watch my kids, you know, go through basketball, track, cross country, and volleyball. And I'm really looking forward to doing it a second time as well with my grandkids.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Well, well, Penn has so many great things going on, but I'm going to give you a very selfish choice. And that is going to the girls' golf state championship every year. Well, 15 out of 18 years that I coached. And knowing how hard those girls worked and the success that they had being a part of our program. But to me, the needed, the needed feeling for me outside the classroom for going to the state championship and then being fortunate enough to win it a few times. Thanks.
Mr. Klinger?
Going to the dome in football nine times was pretty awesome. But I have to, I have to say this. It's going to sound very self-serving. I'm a little embarrassed. But a guy by the name of Chuck Buter and I did a program called Let There Be Night. It involved a little over 3,500 PHM students. For two weeks, we did a light pollution thing. And it was throughout the corporation, all the way out to Madison, all the way to Mary Frank. And the results we got, the number of students involved, we had one of the local TV stations on every night for two weeks, giving us the weather so that the kids could go out and use their light meters to check a model of light pollution, and also to count the stars in Orion, the hunter, the constellation, to see how many of the stars they could see would determine that their area for light pollution. But that was really exciting, and it lasted two weeks, and the results were phenomenal. And I probably most proud of that, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
Two-fold answer for me. Since I've been on the school board the last three years, the first day of school is just amazing. We get the opportunity to be invited to every school. Dr. Thacker and his team, we go around and, a little painful in my household because the kids are grudgingly getting out of bed and going, and I'm all excited to go see, first day of school and connect with some of the teachers and see some of the hard work they've done in the summer, whether it's, you know, painting the classrooms or whatever. That's been an amazing thing that I block off every year for work and just say, I'm committed to that. Homecoming, that's an obvious one. Another selfish thing, the school board, I mentioned giving out diplomas at commencement. But if you haven't been with Dr. Thacker when he hands out popsicles to young kids in the community, those are events that are second to none, and just seeing the joy he gets and his staff and the kids.
Thank you. Great question. Next.
Hi. Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Matthew and I'm a current senior at Penn High School. So I've been able to feel firsthand the impact and concern that a lot of teachers and students have regarding some legislation moving through the State House regarding the regulation of curriculum, specifically about race, sexuality, gender, and ideology. How do you respond to these pieces of legislation? How do you make sure that teachers feel like they can teach the curriculum to the best of their ability? Students can learn the curriculum to the best of their ability in a safe and prosperous environment at Penn? Thank you.
Thank you. So I think the first thing we have to do is, because it's legislation, we need to look at what the Indiana State laws are. And then as a school board, we need to be intentional that we are following those laws and making sure we are doing what we're supposed to be doing and we're not doing what we're not supposed to be doing. And then in terms of support, I think you can offer professional development, having mentors to kind of help you with all of these changes. And I think our administration will need the support to, in turn, give the teachers support to make sure that they feel empowered as well. But I just can't stress enough, it would be following the state law and what Indiana State law says about that.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Sure. I think your last part of your question, there you are, I couldn't remember. Last part of your question is exactly the right part, is how do we do this in a safe and respectful manner, yet follow state law? I think, you know, if we truly say safety is our number one priority, then we've got to make sure we're handling this in a respectful manner, but it has to be a safe manner for everyone. I think that, you know, I think the state law is going to continue to develop. I think we've got to stay current with what's going on and continue to watch the developments as they happen.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, I agree. We are limited because we do have to follow the state law. And, but in so doing, I know that sometimes people can be, feel like they're, you know, outcasts or they don't feel like that their needs are being taken care of. And that's when we need to step in. And as I said earlier, when students need to be nurtured, then we nurture them. And we give them the support and we give them the kind of counseling that they need to help, you know, get through these situations if they do not feel like they're fitting in with that particular situation. But again, we are limited by state law, so we have to go there first.
Mr. Klinger?
Well, there's another, this is another example of, I don't have all the answers. But I tell you what I'd do, though, to get the answers. First, as they've mentioned, I would follow federal and state laws. That's a must. We have to follow that. Second of all, I would consult with our superintendent and I would consult with our school lawyers to find out what they suggest that has to be done. And then third, I'd want to talk to each and every one of you and find out what you're thinking, what you would do. I want to know what your solutions would be. That's part of this teamwork thing we have going. It's going to be us working together. And through all that, I think we can come up with some answers.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
Great question. With legislation or any policy or new change that the IDOE puts in place, and, you know, generally, we have time to react. I've been fortunate enough to, when there is legislation being discussed in South Bend, they hold meetings every month, kind of during the session that I attend, where state and local representatives come up and kind of give us their thoughts on how this will affect public schools or what they're thinking, what are the chances of passing. Many of PHM's administrators are there and some of the teacher representatives. And then, you know, based upon that intel, we go back and collaborate. Like, is this going to be a real thing? How do we, how do we start building toward this or adjusting to this? But always following the state legislation once it passes and planning for it. But thankfully, they give us some time and most of that, and we get some input.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll take our final question from the floor.
Thank you all for being here and being willing to support our kids. In an effort to support principals, teachers, staff, and students, in addition to increasing funding for trained aides in the classrooms of the elementary schools, would you support having an assistant principal assigned to each elementary school?
Go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Yes, absolutely. I think when you look at problems, and I think I said in one of my earlier answers that I thought the biggest issue in PHM was having support in the elementary schools. I think when you have disciplinary issues in the elementary school, the first person who gets pulled is usually, you know, the principal. Or sometimes if there's a whole crisis team, it can be like the whole team. And so we want to make sure that we have another administrator in each of our buildings. I think if we can, Gary can get the budget to work like that, I think that's what we should do.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Fox?
You know, it's a great question. And I think, you know, where you don't have an assistant principal, again, safety is our number one priority, then we should be doing that. And if our principal is having to do something, you know, with a student, then who's now the principal? And, and I, you know, I absolutely, 100% agree, that's something we have to look at. But there's this stupid thing called a budget, and it's a zero-sum budget. And so as you figure out how to allocate resources, which I think we should, what do you want to take it away from? And where's that going to come from? And what's the impact? What's the things that we haven't thought about as we're impacting that? That's why it's not an easy answer. It's the right answer. It's not an easy answer. And how do we go about figuring out the funding to make that happen? Again, I, you know, as I said earlier, I absolutely believe this staffing issue, teachers, administrators, aides, subs, is something, you know, you talk about, you wonder, what's the thing that could fail? That could make Penn fail. That's something that we really got to get our arms around fast, quickly. And again, I promise you that would be number one on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Garrett, go ahead.
Yes, I would certainly support a, an assistant principal at every elementary school. I know that that would add tremendously to any discipline problems that go on there. And I believe also that the better we handle discipline, the more respectful, the more, you know, respectful that our students are in dealing with each other and their teachers. I think that would be a draw for any teacher coming in to work at PHM. Where would you rather work? A school that has discipline, that demands that your students are be respectful and treat their teachers nicely, or somewhere that doesn't? So I think that that's a draw, and that could help us in the future in drawing teachers to our school corporation.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Klinger?
First of all, thank you for standing there for so long. I'd be glad to tire me out, I'm sure. If there is a will, there's a way. And I definitely think there is a definite will to have that assistant principal there. And therefore, there's got to be a way to get that taken care of. So I'm with you all the way.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
Well, with 11 elementary schools, it's a little more challenging, I think, than, you know, like Gary said, than the budget would surprise of. I haven't heard that request personally. Doesn't mean it's not a real one. I, if it is something that we need to address, maybe a co-assistant principal at some of the schools that may be having more disciplinary actions than the others. But I'd love to get your contact information, discuss that in more detail, and find out some specifics on why we feel that would be a resolution. I think staffing with more teacher assistance and looking at adding other programs to elementary may be a little bit more viable through some grants than, again, hiring 11 administrative level positions to the district.
Thank you. Right. As we conclude the evening, each candidate will be given three minutes to give a closing statement. This will be done in alphabetical order by last name, as we've been doing everything else this evening. Ms. Bell, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. So as you've heard, you know, the common theme that I've been speaking to is my experience as a student. So when students come to board meetings, I can appreciate and even relate to some of the issues that they're bringing here because not only was I a high school kid, but I was a high school kid here. I bring to the table that I was a teacher and I taught at Prairie Vista for a year. And then I told you I taught in one of the worst neighborhoods in Chicago. So I have a big range of experience when it comes to teaching at different types of schools and teaching different types of students and using different types of curriculum. So I'm a fresh face. I know directly what teachers need because I am one, and I've always been one. Right now, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so this allows me to be a little bit more involved in the school's PTOs, which I plan on doing when my kids are older. I want to follow in the footsteps of one of our other board members. She stepped down, I think, either four or eight years ago, who was on the PTO and in the school so much and was on the board. And that gave her such a good temperature read into what's going on in our elementary schools. And that's what I would like to do. Like I've said, I do not know all of the issues, but I will work hard to make informed decisions. I, nobody works harder than me. I can promise you that. And then there's going to be some transparency from me in asking questions and seeking out answers. I'm not afraid to tell you, I don't know that and I need to figure that out. And then I'm not afraid to tell you, I was wrong about that. I think that's really important to have transparency in your decision-making and transparency in everything we do as a school board. So when you look up here, nobody can say that they were a PHM student, they were a former teacher, and that they're a mom with kids coming into the district. So with that being said, thank you so much for having me.
She got us.
I got you. All right. Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Hey, what an evening. Mr. Klinger, I agree with you about the Planetarium. I loved in 2011 when we tried, when we had to try and figure out how to fund that, and yet we did. And it's such an addition to our facilities. Also, thank you for the compliment on the tax rate and how we got it lower. I know Mr. Beeler who's here tonight. We started on that thing. It was a mess in 2000, and I'm really proud as to where it is today. I'd also like to say thank you to the other candidates here tonight. School board elections have become very emotional and difficult for you and your family by putting yourself in the public domain to do the right thing and be of public service to your community. I wish the best to all candidates. I'd also just like to give a shout out to Larry Beeler. This will be his 40th year on the board. Larry's a Penn icon, and I was so glad to be part of the group that named the Football Ticket Center after him. He's a great board mentor, and I just love the guy. A year ago today, I was in the West Bank of Israel on a tour of St. Pius Church. We left Israel on October 7th at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. Why tell the story? Because I believe we're in a moment of time where significant change and volatility will be happening quickly and dramatically. Ignore the world for a moment, for a moment, but just look locally. There's current legislation that will dramatically impact the funding formula. Competition for students will increase aggressively, and public education will continue to be under attack. How we did things in the past will be subject to adjustment and modifications in the future. In order to stay competitive, PHM must lead in providing education opportunities and develop curriculum for jobs and technologies that don't even exist today. This election will be about building a board that can quickly, cohesively, and futuristically innovate, technovate, and respond to the future needs in a nurturing environment where we can all thrive. What are my qualifications to be an agile board member enough to lead a board to make this happen? I believe board expertise matters. There's no one on the board with a significant financial background, and I don't believe there's any candidates with that background. That's a skill set needed for an oversight role the board should play. I can fill that role. Board experience. My greatest strength for this role is my board experience and education board experience. I understand school finances. I understand taxes. I've served on large boards. I understand PHM. I have a teacher that's a wife and two grandchildren and a daughter that's a teacher. I have grandchildren that are graduating 2032 and 2034. I'm committed to PHM, and I'm committed to staying for just more than one term. Strategic pillars for success. All my decisions will be driven by my strategic pillars for success. With new board members, there's always a question as to how they will perform in the board. With me, there's no guess. You have 20 years of history. I always came prepared, organized, and ready to hold administration accountable. I'm proud of my 20 years and to be part of what was accomplished. This shows what we can achieve with a focused board mission and great execution by the team. We're Penn. We'll always pursue perfection. It will always drive excellence. I promise the best is yet to come. Please consider my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Garrett?
Well, thank you so much for putting on this event tonight. I think it's very important that candidates as well get out and speak to the public and so that they can understand who we are. But I just want to let you know that in closing, if you want an independent voice on the board, that would be me. I take no financial contributions. I've asked for none. In fact, I've turned down several offers of financial help because I want the board to be nonpartisan. And I know Katie said the same thing. Nonpartisan, I think that's very important. We're not like running for state representative or state senator. Senator, we're working to be on the school board. So we should be in a situation where we're not, you know, muddying the waters and saying nasty things about each other. But I do have a question. I'm wondering, there are three people here on the board or who are running who have put together a coalition. And I don't know, I'm, makes me, I just don't get it, you know? You have three people who have got together, so you're saying that, you know, vote for us instead of this guy over here? And I remember they came out in the beginning a few months ago, they had a thing that said, it had a picture of the three. It said, vote for the common sense group. What does that mean? I don't have common sense? I talked to Ryan, a couple of school board meetings a while ago. And I said, well, why didn't I get invited to be in your coalition? You know, I mean, I'm a good guy. You know, I've got common sense. So I'm wondering how this coalition came about? Was it something, I don't know, organic? All of a sudden, just one day you got together? Or is there someone putting this together? If there's someone putting this coalition together, then I'm wondering if it's actually a nonpartisan group. So that's my, that's my concern, and that's my point I wanted to make. Nonpartisan means you do it for the good of the school. And I tell you what, if you're taking money from a PAC, if you're taking money from somebody else, don't tell me that that person or that PAC is not going to have an influence on what you do going forward. You know, you can say that, but we all know that that's not true. So I'm not handpicked by anybody, and I hope that you guys are not handpicked by anybody because we know how that works. Because then everybody would be voting the same on whatever that handpicked person would want you to vote for. So I hope that no matter what happens here, that we're all independent. You vote what is really good and you do not let someone else influence you. But I just wonder about having a PAC or a coalition, three against everybody else. It just seems, something about it doesn't seem It just seems, something about it doesn't seem nonpartisan to me. So, but again, it's your right, there's nothing illegal about it, but you know, you do what you need, you feel what you need to do. But for me, I'm going to be totally independent. No one's going to control me in my, in my views or my votes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
All right, thank you for thanking me.
Mr. Klinger?
Thank you to Angie and your associates for putting this on. Thank all of you for being here. I too do not belong to a coalition or any political action committee. I am a true independent who is strictly nonpartisan. No one is funding my campaign. Therefore, the only ones I answer to are you. I believe my 45 years as a PHM teacher, administrator, director of the planetarium, and football coach gives me the experience to work with everyone in our school system. I mentioned before, I do not know all the answers. I'm not sure I know all the questions. That which I don't know, I'll seek counsel, namely you. I want to be your voice on the school board. I want to give you a seat on the school board. Therefore, you'll be a part of the overall decision-making process as far as I'm concerned. In order for this to happen, we must work together. I want you to communicate with me your concerns, your questions, and I also want to hear what some of your solutions are. That way, maybe we can come to some answers. This will be done by email, text messages, and phone conversations. All you have to do is give me your email. I'll give you mine when this is over, and we can start talking as soon as you want. I can't do this alone. Please spread the word. Invite me to speak to you and all your friends. And if I still have yard signs available, I only have 50, I'll gladly give you one. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. McCollum?
My three years of being on the board, I think you can go back and watch any school board meeting and know how I, I vote on policies or budgets. And I think my track record and our results, we've seen the last three years prove I deserve another four-year term, whether it's the 98% graduation rate that we've achieved this year. I mentioned Grissom earlier, that was one of my personal challenges and discussions with that administration on how, how we get them to constantly approve to be up to the front. And, and that result was just announced, and we're not, you know, we're not done yet there. Top 4% school district in the state, $16 million in funding to our graduates last year through academic scholarships, you know, increased SRO program through, through our middle schools and elementary, you know, coverage there. So from the safety to the academics, to the athletics, with the field house, that's where I've been focused and that's what, what we've gotten accomplished since my time on the board. And I hope to continue that the next four years. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. If, if those who are watching online, you know, are biting their tongue, man, I'd love to ask Ryan a question. You can always get ahold of me through email or text or phone call. If you don't have that available, then contact administration, they can pass along my information. But I can answer those questions personally and, and try to convince you that I'm the right candidate. And to address some of the comments made just a few minutes ago, the people who approached me with funding, we don't get, we get a small stipend for this position. They know how I vote and they know their influence, whether you give me $5 or, or $100, that's not going to affect anything I do. I, I first focus is this number one for our teachers and students. That's the first thing I lay down when I, I make a vote. And then I work with administration and make sure it's great for the overall community of that. But my focus is making the teachers' jobs easier and our students safer. Technology, I, I've gone on and on about that tonight, so appreciate your vote. Thank you for hosting this. Great, great event, and hopefully in four more years, we can do it again.
Mrs. Bush, I, I've, I feel compelled to address the, the, the thing that was just brought up. And since it was brought up after my closing comments, the political, the financial reports will be coming out here on October the 18th. And I have fully funded my campaign 100% by myself, with the exception, I think somebody gave me $50. So I have an independent candidate that has fully funded my own program. Am I, have I had other people do, do some help? Yes, that's their decision, but I have fully funded 100% of my campaign.
All right, thank you.
Well, I want to respond to that. Can I respond to that? I mean, look, I'm not saying you don't. I'm just wondering why the coalition, why the three of you against the rest of us? Why, I don't get that.
I'd ask.
Let's hear that. I'd love to hear that.
So I think this all started four years ago. Things were really, I'm sorry, two years ago. You know, we were in the height of COVID and things were really, really messy. And in the last election, there were three people that ran on the idea of conservative principles brought back in schools. And I think there's a group of people that decided to create a nonpartisan PAC. So it is a political action committee. The bylaws and the mission are all nonpartisan. And so I want to make sure that there's clarity here. Yes, they have to legally register as a PAC. It is 100% nonpartisan. The three of us and the people in the group, we all have differentiating political views, and that's the point, is that you want nonpartisanship. The second point is to Gary's thing, you can't legally switch money from a PAC to a campaign or from a, they can endorse you. I mean, they've come out and endorsed us and are helping us get elected, but no one is funneling money to the three of us. And so I want to make sure that that is on the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
What do you need a coalition? What do you need it?
All right, at this time, I would like to thank our candidates for taking the time this evening to share your vision for PHM with the community. Thank you for your active participation and courtesy, it is much appreciated. Thank you to the PHM technology staff for the audio support and providing the live stream for those that could not be in person today.